I call the meeting of the Bloomington School Board to order. Today is Monday, June 24th. All school board members are present and I'd like to begin the meeting by asking you to rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome all those who are in the audience tonight. We have a number of presentations, recognitions to do tonight. So we welcome a larger audience than we usually have. School is out, so we don't expect we have any students who are here in order to earn class credit. So you're here because of recognition of yourselves or somebody you know. So again, welcome. And I'd like to begin by an introduction of Coach Pete Sveen in order to speak about girls' track and field accomplishments with Kennedy students. Oh, we have a different speaker coming up. Ms. Callan-Crents, please.
Thanks for having me. And actually, I'm going to have Pete and Christian, our jumps coach, and Patience. She'll already come on up to the stand. This spring, we had some participants make it to the state track and field meet. And Patience went and knocked our socks off with an amazing performance. I'll let the coaching staff talk a little bit more about that. But here to talk more about Patience is head coach Pete Sveen and jumps coach Christian Proudey.
Hello. Just wanted to say a few things about Patience. Patience has been with us since she was a freshman. And she started out as just kind of an average track athlete. And each year, she worked harder and harder. And by the end, she achieved a huge jump of 37.7, got beat by two other girls. Actually, was in second place until the final jump of another girl from Minnetonka. But she got third in the section, but then ended up getting third at state, which was a huge accomplishment. And had got the eye, attention of some college coaches that were there. And we talked to them. And she actually had a visit there. And so that was kind of a neat, neat thing to see. And I'm going to let Christian talk a little bit more.
So Patience didn't start jumping until she was a sophomore. So I only wonder what could have occurred had she started jumping as a freshman. She, I think her first year, she came out doing jumping, she jumped like 32 feet in one of her first meets. And, you know, five, six years ago, that would have been one foot off of the Kennedy record. That's been long held by one of the Fomodou sisters. And then she subsequently improved the next year to like 35 feet, which was incredible. And she came out this season with the hopes of breaking the all-time Kennedy record, which was not a super old record. It's from 2007, but it was up there, set by Grace Uday in 2007. And that was 36.6 and three-quarter. Subsequently, this year, en route to that, which was really a poor season for spring sports, I'm sure all the athletes that are, who are here can attest to not being outside and being very thankful for the athletic facilities that we do have to practice in because we were indoors quite a bit. And especially in jumping in the sand, not a lot of opportunities. Patience went to the Hamlin Elite Meet and got third place. Hamlin Elite Meet, for those who don't know, is a meet where all Class A and AA athletes come. So every athlete in the state applies to get in and they take top 12. So she was with the top 12 athletes at that time of the year in the triple jump and got third, which is a real great accomplishment. Another amazing thing she did is we went to a rescheduled Adina Invitational. And she saw in competition the returning triple jump champion from the state meet the year previous and beat her by a foot on her last jump, which was another amazing accomplishment, setting the meet record by almost a foot there as well. Subsequently, as Pete already said, she went to the state meet. She got third place in the section and she was busy. Your athletes do a lot of events at sections, but she was just focusing on the triple jump at state. And she came into state being really focused. We worked with another coach from Burnsville who said of her, "I wish that I had athletes that were as coachable and as, that reacted as well to coaching as Patience. I could do with a whole team of Patiences. She's wonderful to work with. We're really, you're really lucky to have her." Sentiment with which I fully agree. And so we focused all that week and just prepared for the state meet. And I said to Patience before the meet, "If we go out with our best jump of, of our career, then it's a win for us no matter what." And sure enough, on her first jump, she jumped 37.7 and a quarter. And she didn't even know she jumped it, beating the former record by almost a foot and an inch. So she came back after her second jump and said, "Yeah, I just jumped that last jump. That was good, but like, was my first jump any good?" Because she just, at the state meet, it's just very different. Nobody's yelling anything out as far as what the jumps are. So just a wonderful athlete to coach. And we just wish her the best going forward in her endeavors in college. And hopefully, she has a, a jump coach in college worthy of her talents. She only trains for jumping one to two, maybe two and a half months a season. And the girls that, both the girls that beat her train year-round. So I think she has a lot of upside and I think we could be hearing her name a lot in the future.
I just want to thank you all for the recognition. Just want to say it's been a great year at Kennedy. Overall, the school year was awesome and track season was even better. I plan on attending St. Cloud State University for track and field and just hope everything goes great there.
And we have further student recognitions. I would like to call now on principal-to-be Kevin Grabner. Is Kevin here? Mr. Grabner is going to lead a inventory of recognitions we're going to get a chance to give here. So please, Kevin, if you come to the microphone, it's your turn.
Thank you, Chair Culver, members of the board, Superintendent Fujitaki. Thanks for having us here tonight. It's, it's always fun to be able to recognize the hard work of our kids. And this is one such occasion. We do have four different areas we're going to recognize tonight: boys' track, girls' softball, boys' tennis, and a speech participant. And first off, I'd like to ask Nick Hupton to come up. And I'm going to let Nick talk about his tennis players here that are here with him tonight. Nick?
Well, thank you, everybody, for, for having us. This is a great recognition. The Jefferson tennis team had an outstanding season in all sorts of ways. The group of guys that we have are an amazing group of individuals. They represented Jefferson with class and respect every day that they were on the tennis court. And that was the thing that I was most proud of with these guys, for sure. A lot of milestones that we covered this season: our second straight South Suburban Conference title. Last year, we got second at the Section 3AA sectionals. We lost a very close one, 4-3, to Egan in the finals. So it was sort of a storybook ending this year when we played Egan again in the section finals and beat them 4-3 to go to state. So that was a really good accomplishment. We're all pretty excited about that. The whole team went on to state and we end up finishing sixth, which is good. But every one of our matches was a 4-3 match, which means basically we could be playing with just about any team in the state. The first round, we played Minnetonka, who ended up making the state finals. And we lost a very, very close one to them, 4-3. And then we lost in the consolation final. We beat Rochester-Mayo 4-3. And then we lost in the consolation final to Mottamidi 4-3. So some very competitive tennis. And they, again, represented themselves really, really well. I want to go ahead and invite the guys up here first, and then I'll talk a little bit more individually. We have a few representatives. We've got senior captain Michael McCabe, Andrew McNutt, senior captain Josh Panous, Jonah Panous, and Joe Panous. Along with the great team accomplishments that we had, also, by the way, more all-conference nominations than I've ever had in my 12 years coaching and honorable mention all conferences. So we had a lot of individual efforts as well that were outstanding. We also had some individuals that went to state. Tim Larson and Matt McNutt, who couldn't be here tonight. They won the Section 3AA doubles title after placing second the year before. And they went on and placed third at state for the second straight year. They lost to a Yzeta team that went on to win state in a very close match, too. So that was outstanding. Josh and Jonah Panous got second at the Section 3AA doubles tournament. And so they went on to state as well. And they ended up winning the consolation final, which was an equivalent of about a fifth-place finish, which was great as well. And that's these guys right here. So again, an outstanding season. We really appreciate you having us here. And we hope to continue. We lose a few really great seniors, Michael McCabe and Josh, other seniors that are here today. They'll be tough to replace, but I think next year, we can, we can continue to, to perform as well as we did this year. So thanks again for having us.
Next, I'd like to invite John Leverance, our track coach up here. And our, our track team sent at least three, three contestants onto about five different events at the state level. Is that correct? John Leverance.
Track is a spring sport. And with the weather this, this spring, the State High School League actually made, made up T-shirts that "I survived the winter track season of 2013." But weather schmeather. These guys would come in soaking wet, put hats on. They were ready to work every day. Jordan Lovestrand is with us and Carl Olson. Matt Rosen is not able to make it. And, and Jacob Weber, who was on our four-by-four squad, couldn't make it either. The four athletes that I mentioned won the last five events of the conference track meet, which is a remarkable accomplishment all in itself. So we, we were counting on the, the final five. And, and just so happens that a lot of those conference teams are in our, in our section. And so our coaching staff got, voted coaching staff of the, of the year in Section 3AA. And we owe it to these guys. They, they truly won the final five events. And, and that's a remarkable, remarkable accomplishment. I think we'd start off with Carl winning the 400. And then Jordan would win the 300 hurdles. And then Matt Rosen would win the 800. And then Carl would come back and win the 200. And then the four-by-four squad that consisted of these two guys and Matt Rosen and, and Jacob Weber would come back and, and blow away the competition in a very exciting four-by-four race. So it was, it was an honor to coach these guys because they came to work every day and through thick and thin, weather, you name it, they, they worked really hard at it. Jordan is a senior going on to Gustavus. He's going to run track down there. He was sixth in the 300 hurdles and, and ninth in the 110 high hurdles. Carl, he, he made it to the state in, in two events last year. Is that right? One event, one event. Came back this year in the 200. He made it in the 400 last year. And then he, he did such a great race at sections that he was being sick in the bushes before his 200 race, which he should have, could have won and could have gone to two events. But that just throws the, the great athleticism of Carl that he'd get back on the track after, after being sick in the bushes. But we had Matt Rosen, who was a state champion, ran a 153 something. And it just ran a phenomenal race. He's playing basketball tonight, just a great athlete. And, and Jacob Weber, he's going on to major something in science in, I think in Wisconsin. Going to Wisconsin, yeah. And the great thing is Carl's a junior and Matt's a junior. We got two of them coming back next year, baby! Which is awesome. So appreciate honoring these guys. And I appreciate their hard work and, and look forward to coaching Carl and Matt next year, too. Wish Jordan luck at Gustavus.
And next, I would like to invite members of our very successful girls' softball team up to the podium. And we're only able to have four members here tonight because, as luck would have it, all the other members of the softball team are out playing softball tonight. So I'm going to ask either Emily or Krista, Emily Carr or Krista Flukstedt, to talk a little bit about the team. For the third year in a row, they were the consolation champions in the state of Minnesota. And the, which is, which is terrific. It says a lot about their, their commitment to the program as a team and a lot about the continuity and the spirit and the hard work of, of the, of the athletes on the team. So I'll hand it over.
First off, thanks for having us. Like, it means a lot to be here. And so talking about the season, obviously, a spring sport, it was hard to, like, for all the teams, again, it's hard with all the weather problems. And you had to push through that first. So coming off two consecutive seasons going to state, we obviously had a goal of going to state for a third year in a row, which is pretty unprecedented with our section often being regarded as the toughest section in state. And so starting off the season, I think we played the whole, like, regular season within a two-week span. And so there were some hard losses in there, but that's, I mean, for two-week seasons, it's pretty impressive to have as many wins as we did with so little time. And then going into sections, we won the first couple games, I think, and then we lost. So we had to go through the loser's bracket again, like, our first year we won. And so we got to the championship and we had to beat Lakeville South twice to win. And we won the first game. And then we started playing the second game and we got to the fifth inning when it started downpouring. And so we had to go take shelter in our cars. It turns out, we stayed there until 11:30 at night. And that's when the umpires finally called the game. And we found out we were section champions while we were waiting in a car. And so that's pretty original. Doesn't happen very often, I guess. So that's one to remember. And so then we took another trip down to Mankato, our third year in a row, which was very impressive for us. And unfortunately, we weren't able to win the first game. So it's going to be one for next year, hopefully, that we'll win. But we came back and we won two more games in state. And we took home a third consecutive state consolation and championship, which really meant a lot for us, losing really good athletes the past season. It meant a lot for us to be able to come back and do well in state again for three years in a row. So hopefully, our success continues next year. And thanks again for having us here.
Thanks, Emily, for filling us in on the season. Our last, I individually like to recognize Mike Blazin. And I don't think Mike is here. I haven't seen him in the audience yet. Mike is a, is a member of our speech team at school. And Mike, he is a senior. He graduated. He can, he competed in the congressional debate at the National Forensics League National Speech and Debate Tournament in Birmingham, Alabama, last week. And the reason why he participated in that tournament is because he placed second in the Southern Minnesota District Tournament held earlier this year in February. Now, Mike did not qualify to go to the elimination rounds in the tournament, but he did represent Jefferson and the state of Minnesota in what is considered the largest academic competition in the world with nearly 5,000 participants from across the United States. So that says a lot about Mike and, and his abilities. And again, for Mike and all of our, our student athletes here tonight, we very much appreciate you inviting them here to be recognized for their, for their accomplishments, but more importantly, for their hard work to get there. So on behalf of the students at Jefferson and the staff at Jefferson, thanks very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Grabner. Also, the school board would like to acknowledge, recognize those who supported students in their efforts. That is hard work of our student athletes and competitor in speech was mentioned, but also, we know that there's hard work by parents in supporting, traveling, financing, the other things that go to help make our students a success in their participation. So if the parents would care to rise, so the school board may acknowledge you as well. The parents and guardian and supportive students would like to rise at this time?
They've all left.
They, they all left! We thought everyone was going to stay for our whole meeting. Next, we have an introduction of a new principal here. And I would like to take the opportunity to turn this over to our assistant superintendent, Chris Lennox, for an introduction. Mr. Lennox.
Thank you, Chairman Culver, Superintendent Fujitaki, and members of the board. Tonight, I'd like to introduce Mr. Jeremy Coons. Jeremy will be taking over as principal at Hubert Olson Middle School. Jeremy joined the Bloomington Public Schools back in 1999 as a sixth-grade teacher. Eventually, he moved into the role of Dina Student at Oak Grove Middle School. And in 2006, Jeremy was hired to be the assistant principal at Olson Middle School, where he's been ever since. Jeremy is an outstanding administrator, and we are very excited that he'll be taking over for Mr. Lee as principal at Olson Middle School. Please welcome Mr. Jeremy Coons.
Thank you. Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Lennox and Chairman Culver, members of the board, Superintendent Fujitaki. Thank you very much for this wonderful opportunity. I am absolutely honored to have this opportunity to be able to continue at the capacity of, of principal here in Bloomington. And even more so excited about the opportunity to continue at Olson, where, where I have been for the last seven years. We, we do things great here in Bloomington, from, from new teacher induction to promoting to within, giving them opportunities to develop and grow. Without those opportunities, I wouldn't be standing here now. And so I thank you to the, to the board and to, to everyone that supports Bloomington Schools, that there's a lot of growth and professional development that takes place even within our employees here. And it's life-changing and it's, it's an outstanding opportunity for, for, for some of us to be able to continue to grow through. In addition, my, I would, I would probably not be able to hear the rest of it if I got home and not acknowledged my wife, who is also a teacher here at Oak Grove Elementary School. And so she also benefits from all the opportunities that are provided here as well. As far as Olson, there are great things that are happening there. I just look forward to being able to work with the outstanding teachers, partnering with the parents, and, and just grabbing on and rushing through to get that through the middle school experience with all of our students. Sometimes it can obviously be a little rocky along the way, but we've, we've got outstanding staff members in place to make sure that all of our students step out and are prepared to go on into high school and beyond. And so I'm just thrilled for this opportunity and I, I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Coons. Congratulations and best wishes. The Bloomington School District is fortunate to have businesses and organizations supporting our learners and the community of Bloomington. In appreciation of these collaborations, the school board recognizes Friends of Education periodically. And tonight, representing the board is Director Nellie Corman. And Director Corman, I'm going to turn it over to you to introduce our friend for this evening, the Latino Parent Association.
Good evening. Buenas noches. The Latino Parent Association held its first meeting on Monday night, March 26, 2012, at Valley View Middle School. Latino parents from Bloomington Public Schools gather in the school cafeteria for the first Latino Parent Association, the only one in Minnesota and possibly the country at that time. They are here tonight to tell us more about the association, their mission, vision, and collaborative efforts with the school district and other agencies. Please join me in welcoming Telma Fight and Jesús Lara, presidents of the Latino Parent Association.
I'd like to acknowledge also, there's an interpreter tonight, Susan Schobert. Thank you for being here.
Buenas noches, miembros del comité de educación. Superintendente Fujitaki, administración y audiencia presente.
Good evening, those here of the association, President Fujitaki and, could you repeat that, Jesús?
Administración y audiencia presente.
And the administration and the audience who is present.
Mi nombre es Jesús Lara, co-presidente de la asociación de padres latinos de las escuelas públicas de Bloomington.
My name is Jesús Lara, and I am the president of the
Latino Parent Association.
Of the Latino Parents Association.
De las escuelas de Bloomington.
Of the Bloomington Schools.
En nombre de la asociación, les quiero agradecer por esta oportunidad.
In the name of the association, I would like to thank you for this opportunity.
Y el espacio que nos han brindado dentro de su agenda.
And the space that, of time that you have given us within your agenda.
Es un placer estar aquí, presentándonos ante ustedes.
It is a pleasure to be here amongst you, presenting ourselves to you.
En sus folders, en sus folders, han recibido un folleto de la asociación.
In your folders, you have received a bulletin of the association.
Voy a empezar por presentar algunos miembros de nuestro comité ejecutivo.
I will begin by presenting some of the members of our association executives.
Laura Gódinez, secretaria.
The secretary.
Pilar Álvarez.
El propósito de la visita de esta noche es de dar a conocer ante todos ustedes y a la comunidad de Bloomington, la Asociación de Padres Latinos de las Escuelas Públicas de Bloomington.
The purpose of our getting together tonight is to let you know... I'm sorry. ¿Puedes repetir eso, por favor? To make ourselves known before the whole community. And also to the Bloomington School District.
Así como también el de establecer una relación estrecha con todos ustedes, con el Comité de Educación y con el Distrito Escolar.
And also to have a more narrow relationship between our committee and the Bloomington School District.
En el verano del 2011...
In the summer of 2011.
En una asamblea general realizada en la escuela Valley View Middle School.
In the general assembly that we had in Valley View Middle School.
A la cual se convocó a toda la comunidad latina del distrito de Bloomington.
To the which we called everyone, every Latino person in the community of the Bloomington School District.
Y ante la presencia del Superintendent Fujitaki.
And before the presence of the Superintendent Fujitaki.
La Superintendent Asistente Nancy Allen Mastrom.
And the Assistant Superintendent Nancy...
Allen.
Allen.
Y la miembro del Comité de Educación Melissa Alverson Wickland.
And the member of education Melissa Alverson.
Y la Asociación de Padres Latinos fue aprobada por unanimidad.
The Association of Latino Parents was acknowledged by the community.
Las ideas y sugerencias expresadas por los padres de familia.
The ideas and the suggestions that were expressed by the parents of the families.
En dichas asambleas son los pilares de nuestra asociación.
In this assembly are the pillars of our association.
Y en esta se basa nuestra misión, visión y metas.
And on this we base our vision, our mission, and our goals.
Desde entonces hemos venido trabajando juntos.
Since then, we have come along, working together.
De una manera voluntaria e independiente.
In a voluntary manner and independently.
Construyendo paso a paso una estructura.
Building step by step a structure.
Haciendo planes de trabajo.
Making plans for work.
Y colaborando con diferentes agencias.
And collaborating with different agencies.
La Oficina de Equidad Educativa, Office Equity Educational. La colaborativa para el desarrollo sano de la juventud latino, Latino Jard... Development Collaborative, y el Condado de Gennepin, Gennepin County. Y las bibliotecas públicas del Condado de Gennepin, Gennepin County Public Libraries.
Sabemos que el Distrito Escolar tiene un trabajo muy importante que realizar y metas académicas que alcanzar.
We know that the school district has a very important role and many goals to accomplish.
Las metas de la Asociación de Padres Latinos apoya la misión del Distrito Escolar.
The goals of the Latino Parents Association support the goals of the school district.
Nuestra misión es trabajar en conjunto con las escuelas para incrementar la calidad educativa de las nuevas generaciones latinas, fomentando la comunicación, el conocimiento y el respeto entre las diferentes culturas.
You can read that. Our mission is to work together with the schools to increase the quality of education for new Latino generations, promoting communication, knowledge, and respect among different cultures.
Nuestra misión dice, los jóvenes latinos se gradúan con éxito debido al acceso a programas, de programas académicos de excelencia, siendo así el orgullo de las familias y del Distrito de Bloomington.
Okay, the vision, young Latinos successfully graduate due to access to academic programs of excellence, thus being the pride of the families and the Bloomington District.
La Asociación de Padres Latinos espera contar con el apoyo de ustedes para continuar teniendo una relación estrecha, sólida, para los logros de nuestros objetivos comunes.
The Association of Latino Parents hopes to count on your support to help us narrow that gap between us, to be able to help the children excel.
En nombre de la Asociación de Padres Latinos, muchísimas gracias por su atención y su tiempo.
In the name of the association here of the Latino Padres, families, we thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Gina Wade Arley, the Director in the Office of Educational Equity, to our superintendent and to our school board and to our executive directors. I would like to introduce the rest of the Latino Parent Association. So if you're in the audience, would you please stand? All of you! And in support of our Latino Parent Association, we also have our Somali Parents Association that's trying to get started. They are emulating and reflecting on what the Latino Parent Association have done, and they are supporting our Latino Parent Association tonight. So would you please stand? I just want to say that this is new work. When we have our Somali families wanting to support our Latino families, our African-American families coming together all around the achievement of our students. This makes me so excited and it makes me smile. It makes the work that we do so worthwhile. So I appreciate everything that you do, Bloomington Public Schools, appreciate everything that you do. Am I right? You know, I'm different, so yeah, that's me. All right. So, thank you all and I really appreciate the work that you do.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here and we are pleased to add your name of your organization to our Friends Wall at the back of the room. A motion is now in order for approval of our agenda for tonight's meeting?
So moved, seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll move then to Part A Agenda. Part A Business are those things that are normal business that does not generally require further discussion or debate. On our agenda is Personnel Matters, Contracts and Agreements, and Finance Reports. Is there a motion to approve Part A?
Move, approve, seconded.
Moved and seconded, approve Part A. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We carried Part A Agenda. We will move on to Part B. First item in Part B is our first reading of the long anticipated policy that this board has discussed and had preliminary reports on, and that is a reading of what will be proposed as Policy 506.1 on Bullying Prevention. And we'll recognize Mr. Eric Melby.
Mr. Chair.
Director of Special Services, or yes, excuse me.
The School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the first reading of New Policy 506.1 Bullying Prevention.
Next.
A motion is moved and seconded? Mr. Melby, Director of Special Services, and if you'd introduce the other people to the table with you and explain what we're doing and then be prepared to answer any questions the board may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Culver, Superintendent Fujitaki, members of the school board. Tonight, you have in front of you and received in your board packet the first reading for the bullying prevention policy. I brought with me some help tonight. Sitting next to me on my right is Julie Herzog. Julie is the Director of Pacer Center's National Bullying Prevention Center. So she does a lot of great work with Pacer Center and Julie and I have had opportunities to collaborate on a, you know, number of issues around bullying prevention. And she has had a great deal of input into helping us formulate this policy. Julie also was a co-chair of the Governor's Bullying Prevention Task Force last year, I guess, that gave recommendations to the legislature, which we had, you know, hoped and thought was going to result in some new legislation around bullying prevention. Unfortunately, it didn't happen this session. But Julie will be helping answer some questions tonight. And then I invited Mr. Papas to come up, our Human Resources Director, because the bullying prevention policy does have some tie-ins to other policies in the district and some that might have, or not might, will have HR implications as well. So I've asked Bruce to sit up here tonight as well. So, as I've mentioned before, the policy was in the board packet. I gave you a sort of a sneak peek a few weeks ago, I guess, of what the policy was gonna look like. And I've spoken to a few folks to give some more information over the last week or so. As mentioned before, the policy has four major, I would call it, areas to it, one being the definition, which Julie was very helpful with and can talk about the fact that that's a very tough thing to come up with as a definition for bullying. The bullying prevention system, which we're proposing putting into place here in the district. And frankly, the policy is somewhat modeled off of MSBA policy and other districts' policies. We've kind of taken what we feel like are the best parts of other policies, but I haven't really seen one that explicitly talks about a bullying prevention system being put into place, which is part of our Bloomington proposed policy. The investigation, how we will investigate acts of bullying and consequences for acts of bullying would be another big part of the policy. And finally, the dissemination of the policy information to parents, students, staff, everybody would be what I would consider the four major areas. And just as a reminder to folks, this policy, work has been going on a long time on this policy. In addition to help from Julie Herzog, we've also had lots of input from various groups like the Special Education Community Advisory Committee, the District Curriculum Committee, Safe and Drug Free Schools Committee, principal groups indirectly, then, you know, from the principal's student input, teacher input. So I think there's been a lot of input into this policy, which, the more input you get sometimes, the more difficult it makes it to actually come up with a finished product. But we've done our best and it's a first reading, so we'll answer questions, we'll have some discussion, and then bring it back with any changes that need to happen based on that discussion for a second reading. And with that, I would just open it up for discussion.
Before we begin, is there anything in particular you'd like to highlight that you want to call the board's attention that's an additional item or might be some wording that we should be paying special attention to here? You're working developing it.
Yeah, well, the definition is big and it's a fairly all encompass, I don't want to say all encompassing, but it's a definition that will cover, hopefully, all acts of bullying. And then, as I mentioned before a little bit, the prevention system. Having a system in place, and in the first reading it talks about the superintendent appointing a leader for the system, that would be me. And then working with other leaders in the district, Mr. Papas in particular, and then building principals and representatives from the community, building whatever that looks like, creating this group that gets together is a big part of this policy and how that's gonna frame what we do around bullying prevention in the district in the future. So I'd point out those two things in particular. I think the investigation and the consequences, they have connections to other policies like the discipline policy. That is where our current bullying policy is embedded in, the discipline policy has been. So it's a good time for us to have a standalone bullying prevention policy.
Then would this replace the current policy? Are we eliminating something that's in our policies?
That's in...
Precedent?
Yeah, the regulation for the discipline policy, so we could address that or take that out of there.
Take that out, okay.
And it's numbered 506.1.
Then that puts it at the head of the list under...
Yeah, it follows...
...Regulation 506?
Yep, because discipline is 506 and bullying is, the bullying prevention is related to and coming out of that policy, actually. That's why I listed it as 506.1.
Okay, so 506 will remain in 506, or 1 will follow after...
Correct.
506, okay.
Correct.
Thank you. Yes, Director.
So, you know, I've heard over the years of a number of instances of cyberbullying that's occurring outside of the school day, outside of the school building. It's going on, you know, during evening hours and so forth. But of course, it has repercussions then the next day and day after day in school. Can you explain to me how this policy might better address that compared to our processes previously?
Yeah. We certainly have been addressing instances of cyberbullying or frankly, any bullying that takes place outside of the school day. And this policy explicitly lays out, you know, a lot of things that we have been dealing with in the district in terms of discipline and behavior incidents and acts of bullying. But this policy really puts it into clear language that we do address that. And, you know, talks about in the definition electronically transmitted acts, cyberbullying, internet, cellphone, personal digital assistant, computer, handheld devices currently in use or later developed. So we're trying to be all encompassing there and being mindful that technology changes quicker than almost anything. And so who knows what will be out there in a year or two that could help students unfortunately cyberbully. Yep. Yeah, and Bruce is pointing out that in the regulation, Part 1, A5, alleged incident of bullying or cyberbullying which occurs off school property may not entail threats or acts occurred during school hours but interferes with or obstructs the mission or operations of the district or safety and welfare of student or other students or employees will be dealt with. And I don't know, Julie, if you have any thoughts or want to add anything to the whole... Cyberbullying is a huge issue and a huge piece of bullying and that was discussed a lot when coming up with this definition.
Yeah, I would just add, I really love the line "currently in use or later developed", because we can never really address what's gonna be happening with cyberbullying. And cyberbullying isn't usually happening in isolation from bullying that's happening in person. And so I think it is important to address it and I think this definition does a really nice job of looking at that.
Does this help school administrators? I mean, does this give our administrators more, well, a clearer authority for addressing these issues?
I would like to think so, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, Director Bercham?
First of all, thank you for coming. Appreciate all the hard work that went into this. Eric, thank you again for letting me stop in and pick your brain, go over this document. I'd like to tag on to Mark's question. I'll give you a hypothetical and we'll go from there. There's one student who has a nemesis and he or she, they're off school grounds, they're miles away. It's on the weekend, it's an evening. And this bullying is happening. It's clearly not a school-sponsored event. They're on their own time. Now, they bring that aggression back to school Monday, Tuesday, whenever they come back to school, and they act on it at school. We're going to take care of that. We're not gonna say, let me see, where did this start? Oh, that was in another state. We're not gonna address that. We act on that if it happens at school.
Yes, we do currently and we will continue to do that under this policy. And when principals are doing their investigation into alleged acts of bullying or misbehavior, it often didn't originate in the school building. It happened in the community or at night or at the mall or someplace. And oftentimes, having all that information through that investigation can help us determine appropriate, not only consequences, but supports and helps for kids that are, you know, dealing with bullying or if somebody is being the bully. What can we do other than just consequence them to help them understand what they're doing is not okay and not do it again? So having all that context about the history of the event is actually quite helpful.
Great, thank you. I just, I'm trying to remember in middle school and high school, most of the vibrato...
We're, we're going to take care of that. We're not going to say, now let me see, where did this start? Oh, that was in another state, we, we're not going to address that. We act on that if it happens at school.
Yes, we, we do currently and we will continue to do that under this policy. And, and when, when principals are doing their investigation into alleged acts of bullying or misbehavior, it often didn't originate in the school building. It, it happened in the community or, or at night or at the mall or, or someplace. And, and oftentimes, having all that information through that investigation can help us determine appropriate, not only consequences, but supports and helps for kids that are, you know, dealing with bullying or if somebody is being the bully. What can we do other than just consequence them to help them understand what they're doing is not okay and not do it again? So having all that context about the, the history of the event is, is actually quite helpful.
Great, thank you. I just, I'm trying to remember in middle school and high school, most of the vibrato happened on the ball field or, you know, wherever, whatever street lamp you were hanging out under. It tells you how old I am. But it's always seemed to have been away from school. And then it, you know, it jumped on the bus or on, on the bike or however you got to school and it came to school. So it's comforting to know that we're going to take care of whatever happens there.
Right.
Yes, Director Hertz?
Just one other question to that is, once this policy is approved by the board, do we have a, a plan for how we're going to communicate it to our, our community, our students, our parents? And maybe in a more pedestrian way than a policy and regulation, which I think is going to go over the heads of a lot of kids, so.
Yeah, each building will be, you know, sharing this information at, at all sorts of events. You know, whether it's back-to-school times or, or, they already do a lot of this with, with their current bullying prevention efforts, which, you know, we don't have a standalone policy for, but we've certainly been doing a lot of work around bullying prevention in the district for a number of years. So this will be added to that sort of repertoire of what you're able to share with, with families, with students, putting it in handbooks, you know, sort of advertising it, maybe in, Rick's not here, so I can't ask him, but school pages or something like that. Making sure that we're spreading the, the policy word, as it were, far and wide and, and being very intentional about it, particularly because it's going to be a new policy, right? So making sure that, that it's on people's radar and, and they understand what it is. And then again, that bullying prevention team is, is going to be working to kind of have a frequently asked questions almost about it, I think, where, where, because the questions will arrive, obviously. And so making sure that that information, once we have it, is, is disseminated out to folks is important as well. But I think to answer your question, we'll be very intentional about, about doing that and getting this out.
Yes, Director Ablin?
I think the policy is a great policy. It's excellently written and so forth. But I do want to focus in on one section and a couple of words. Section G, if you'd go with me to the section G under the bullying prevention standards. It speaks to a person who engages or permits, condones, or tolerates bullying shall be subject to discipline. Down the, down below that, you speak to employees and that's well said and I agree with that statement. But what about the poor student that witnesses some bullying at the fourth grade level or 12th grade level? I see no language in here of how they are going to be subject to discipline. How are you going to hold a third grade student to some discipline if they happen to witness a bullying event? I think that little part is vague, maybe, maybe needs to be addressed better. I like to have an explanation how the, how that was developed, I guess.
Well, I think the intent was to cover what you're asking, I think, is, is if a situation, and the hard part, the hard thing about answering that question, Director Ablin, is that every bullying situation probably looks a little bit different and, and there's lots of context involved in, in that. So, you know, we're trying to cover being able to deal with students who are witnessing a bullying act and maybe by their actions or non-actions, kind of promoting that act to go on. And so that's what the intent of this language would be, to be able to work with those kids, whether it's some sort of consequence and/or supports to them as well, to, to help them understand that it's not okay to sort of be a passive witness to something going on or even, I hate to say this, but sometimes you might have a little group and there's one lead bully, but there's more than one in the group that are, that are supporting that activity. But I think your question's a good one and it is a first reading. So I would definitely want to take a look at this and try to be more clear, I guess, on that for, for a second reading.
As one who has often had to enforce a policy like this as administrator, I always looked for consistency and those words don't offer me consistency.
Okay.
It's open to my interpretation and it's open to my colleagues and different interpretation. So I guess I'd like to have you look at that somehow, some way. I have no suggestion for you, but I think that's maybe too vague.
Julie will help me.
Director Corman?
Yeah, well, Eric, we talked earlier today, so I just wanted to first say that I apologize for stepping out right at the beginning of your presentation. So I missed the very beginning where I'm, I'm guessing you spoke about what we talked over the phone earlier today and I'm talking about, you know, how we have the, the bullying policy for this student discipline. But my question earlier today was how do we kind of apply the same, some sort of the same policy for staff members as well? I don't know, did you talk about that?
Not in great detail, but I did point out that the reason that Mr. Pappas is up here with us is because there are connections with, with other policies, in particular employee policies, like the harassment and violence policy. And we did have a good discussion and I thank you for your question, actually, because it generated some good discussion about that. And, and we have the same expectations for staff around behavior that's bullying as we, as we do for students. And when we work on this bullying prevention system and this team, Bruce has been drafted already to be a, a large part of that team to help us figure out how we can tie that in with HR policies around staff feeling mistreated or misconduct by staff, which, you know, could be bullying-like behavior.
And my other question was regarding the difference between bullying and harassment. You know, often we parents kind of get confused in between one or the other.
Yeah.
So are we going to kind of have more, have a, a clear definition of both of them in both the student discipline part and the HR?
Yeah, I, I think that's, it's a very good point and, and it's come up a couple of times. And Julie, you can help me with this, but I would say that bullying is, is broader than harassment. Harassment is, is specified federal law, it's, it's protected classes and, and that can definitely, harassing behavior can be bullying behavior, but not all bullying behavior is necessarily harassment, is how I would, how do I do with that?
Good. I, you know, there's not a federal definition right now for bullying, but there is a federal definition for harassment, just like Eric said. And basically, it is bullying, but it's when the harassment is based on a, a protected class. For example, if the disability is a protected class. So if a student with Down Syndrome is being harassed based on their disability, then that's considered harassment and there's federal protections for that. So with, with a federal definition of harassment, that's how that would fall. But I think, you know, what Eric's done here is created that altogether, brought that together. So there's not a distinction in this policy between bullying and harassment. It's all looked at as bullying.
Okay. And you were talking about handbooks, you know, those handbooks that come home. And I would strongly encourage you to campaign a lot more for this one policy because sometimes we get the handbooks and we don't read them. And we're not going to go directly to which one is bullying unless we are, our own kids are, are being victims of bullying.
Right, and I appreciate that. And I think it is such a current, large issue that, that I'll take that under advisement and we will work hard to make sure that people are aware of the policy and, and not just say, well, it's in your handbook. We'll, we'll work at that.
I know the principals do go over specific things with students at the beginning of the year. So there's a list of things that they do and they highlight certain things that are in the, in the handbook. So that's part of it. The other thing with employees, they also, during the workshop, we go over a whole list of policies and kind of highlight, so this obviously will become front and center since it's a new policy. But it will be added to the repertoire of what's presented and discussed with staff at the beginning of the year.
Right, because I know that principals and teachers are very serious about it. But I like our students to be more serious about it, too.
Yeah, I understand. I will also add, and I think I mentioned this when I was, before you guys last time, was Julie and I and Barton Erickson from Cornerstone did a presentation about bullying prevention efforts in the district with the League of Women Voters Sponsored Event. And, and it's real impressive, the topple group from Jefferson, the student organization, that's not just focused on bullying prevention, but that's a big piece of what they do. Getting groups like that and then trying to grow that topple kind of concept into the middle schools and elementary schools. They're going to call it tiny topple, I think, I like the name. That will be other ways that we can help get the message out, I think.
Can, can you give us just a brief overview from the state level again? I know, I know the legislative material is not dead, it can come back to us next year. What's your prognostication? Is it going to be alive again next year and something going to come out of the legislature? And how does this parallel that?
Can I let you take a stab at that one first?
Well, being on the Governor's Task Force, I was following the bill closely. And with the, the definition within that bill is a lot different because it looks at, it breaks down bullying. It also looks at harassment, it looks at intimidation, and it looks at cyberbullying, all separate. So it does give four separate definitions for those. And then it brings it under a broader term called prohibited conduct. And part of the background of that is that's what we were tasked with on the, you know, that was part of the Governor's Task Force, that they wanted us to look at those four definitions. So that prohibitive conduct is a little different, but it contains the, the essence and what is in this definition. You know, it does reflect back when you, when you go through those four different definitions. I think Eric has really condensed it down to it's just something tighter. And will that come back? Yeah, I think they plan to, Senator Scott Dibble plans to reintroduce that right away when session starts next year. So, and a lot of this was, a lot of what Eric has created was based upon those, that bill that was written. And one of the nice things, I think, that's in here too, that Eric, I was waiting for you to point out, is that there's going to be a reported designee, which I think is a really nice aspect because in working at an advocacy organization, one of the things that we hear the most is that parents don't know to go, who to go to in the school system when there is a bullying situation. And I think, you know, Bloomington's doing a beautiful job of, of streamlining that. And, you know, by assigning someone, parents are going to know who to go to. So I'd really encourage you, when you are putting your policy out there, to make sure that parents know that there's a place that they can report the situation to. And I think that's going to really help everyone.
Yes?
I'd just like to point out that eventually, things are working their way up through the court systems and a lot of hurtful things are said outside of schools, they're on Facebook and things like that. And the circuits are divided. Some say it's free speech and you aren't going to be able to punish somebody for, for that kind of conduct. The Eighth Circuit, our circuit, is more lenient for schools. That we do have to show that there's some sort of bad effect in the schools from the speech that occurs outside of school. But they have been more lenient in letting schools discipline students for that. So it depends what the Supreme Court's eventually going to do on some of those things.
I've given this a lot of thought from my experience in the classroom and also just on my own personal behaviors. And I believe that we're going to be learning a lot as we take a look at what is bullying and what we can do about it. Because I know as someone who's been bullied, but also somebody who has bullied other people, how easy it is to go along with what other people are doing, especially among our younger students. And so I understand the concern that you had, Mr. Ablin, about the way that policy is worded that implies that those who are observing it and don't do something about it are, are at risk or need to be taught some lesson or disciplined. But I was that person, too. I went along with it, I observed other bullying. And I don't think I was, it was probably before I was maybe 10th, 11th grade that I was able to stand up and tell people to stop bullying somebody else. That I got brave enough that it wasn't more important to me that I go along and watch it and have fun with it. Again, I think that's, that's sort of the way the culture works in my observation as a classroom teacher. There are people who get picked on for their size, for their habits, whatever it might be. And, and those young children, they don't understand what they're doing. They don't understand that it's not okay to always be taking a chair away from the same person to tease them. But also, I don't have that longer-term contact nor the tools that I've known what to do about that. What do you do in order to change that kind of behavior? What is the effective, if not discipline, at least new patterning? So that's what I see as going to be the learning experience for our teachers is, what do you do at which grade levels and which stage of development in order to educate students about more mature behavior? Because to me, that's a lot of what it comes down to. And we used to think of bullying as being, you know, picking on somebody by beating them up or shoving them or pushing them around. And we now have a much broader definition of what can be emotionally bullying as well. So I'm, I want to congratulate you, Eric, on what you bring forward and I appreciate it, as Herzog, for you to be here and Bruce as part of the conversation. Because I, I tend to think we're a little bit out ahead of the curve on this in wanting to create our own wording and initiate our own policy, where there isn't a lot of groundwork that we can build on and say, oh yeah, this is what the reporting form should look like and this is what always works. We're going to be part of creating that. So thank you for bringing that forward and thanks to the school board for insisting that this is a priority and looking to have something on the table, which we have here after adjournment of the legislature in May, before the end of June, that we have something that we're going to discuss and, and look to, to perfect to the best we can before implementing it.
All right.
So thank you, any other comments, reactions? Yes, Superintendent Fujitaki, please.
I'd like to thank Eric and recognize him for being here. He's been without electrical power at his home for two days.
Since Friday night, yep.
And he probably is going to be another two days without power and tonight's his wife's birthday.
Oh, thank you for being here.
I actually like being here because there's electricity and air conditioning. Should have brought my wife with.
All right, we have a resolution. We would act on this as the first reading, correct? And we'll take a vote now and it will come back before us again for a second reading. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
opposed? Carrie's? Thanks again for your presentation tonight. Next item on our agenda, 2013-2014 vendors and rates for district insurance. And Bruce Pappas is our Human Resources Director, is here to explain what we have before us. But first, if we'd have a motion, we can put this in action. Is there somebody who'd like to make that motion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves of vendors and rates for district insurance for the 12-month period from July 1, 2013 to June 30, 2014, per the attached memo. One, SFM Insurance Group Workers' Compensation Insurance Policy. Two, Kraus Anderson Insurance Control Workers' Compensation Claims Management and Loss Prevention Program. Three, Markel Insurance Company Blanket Accident Policy, Special Risk for Registered Volunteer Workers. Four, Westchester Fire Insurance Company Fiduciary Liability for Self-Funded Health Insurance Plan. Five, the Hartford Fire Insurance Company ERISA Bond. Six is ING, Critical Illness and Cancer Insurance. Further, be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District Number 271 per its organizational meeting of January 14, 2013, authorizes a superintendent or is designated to execute documents within the authorized budget as appropriate to the daily operation of the school district.
Second.
Thank you, Director Bartalata, Director Bush. Bruce, Mr. Pappas?
Chair Culver, Superintendent Fujitaki, directors and the listening audience. In, in, I'm sorry, in March of, or March 18th of 2013, I brought before you a set of insurance approval, a list of vendors and rates. This basically is a supplement to that. It's the, right before renewal of July 1st, has to do with mostly a worker's comp with a few other policies that require your approval. And all of the information attached in the memo basically outlines why we need to do what we're doing. Obviously, we need a worker's compensation plan. Kraus Anderson has helped us keep our costs down for our worker's comp claims. They've been great to work with. It's been an amazing thing to not only decrease our claims, but also. It's been an amazing thing to not only decrease our claims, but also decrease our injuries for our employees. A year ago, we put in place a special policy for volunteers who come to the district and are hurt in the act of volunteering, which I think were quite unique in the, in the metro area, having that policy. And then a couple of the other policies on here, there's fiduciary liability, which basically protects a policy from acts of fraud. The ERISA bond, which also does a similar thing for any of the kind of funds that kind of pass through the hands of employees. And then the last thing that's on here is a critical illness cancer insurance policy that will pay a premium, or not pay a premium, but will pay a...
Benefit.
Benefit, thank you very much for the word, for all part-time and full-time employees, not just those on our insurance plan, but who happen to go through a critical illness or cancer. The critical illness that people might be interested that are covered are heart attacks, stroke, kidney failure, coma, major organ failure, permanent paralysis, and also cancer, carcinoma in situ, and also skin cancer. So there are quite a few things that unfortunately, we watch in HR that pass through, through our department when we try to help our employees. This is in, tied in with our insurance plan, which we have a high deductible plan. This will help people, most of these that I named have a $2,000 benefit that would help people pay their deductible and any other out-of-pocket costs that may come around a very difficult situation they might experience. We started looking at that in, actually Brad Parker's with me here, he co-chairs the Labor Management. Want to come up, Brad? Why don't you come on up? We started looking at this in Labor Management a year ago, it was brought to us by ING as part of our self-funded, the reinsurance plan. And then when we went with somebody else, we continued to look at the policy because it held a, held a lot of promise for the ways that we know that some of our employees, obviously, it's difficult to even make the deductible at times. And we do contribute half of the amount of the deductible to their HSA on an annual basis, but still for them to come up with the remainder of the money if they were to have a cancer, you know, and then they have a sudden insurance cost that would, you know, basically eat up all their deductible. We actually even advance part of the HSA at the beginning of the year if they, if they have a need. But this really fit in well with the plans. Brad and I started looking at some of these plans.
Couple years.
A couple, three years ago. We instituted this year also a voluntary accident policy tied with the wellness plan, which we voted on, you all voted on back in March, which basically, if a person is injured, even their children, their spouse, they could enroll them in the plan, too. That would help pay for the deductible. So we've been looking for ways, we know the deductible plan helps people start looking at their insurance cost in a different way, because they start, they see the first dollars really come through. And so in lots of ways, we start thinking, well, do, is this a urgent care visit versus emergency room visit? You know, can I look for generic for this drug that I take on a, on a monthly basis? Can I look for a cheaper way to buy that? Because it, it really engages them in the process. But on the backside of that, it may engage them so that it may, they may have difficulty and experience hardship making some of those payments. So that's one of the reasons why we looked at this policy. And Labor Management endorsed it overwhelmingly unanimously to, to supplement what we do in our health insurance program. Do you have anything you want to add to that? Or I actually talked a lot.
Yeah, basically did say, say it all, all. But the way I look at it is that we've had a number of people with critical illness. And during that period of time, there's a lot of other expenses, not, not only for the care, but there's a lot of other things going on. And we're always looking for, for ways to help people bridge those, those times. And it's not a lot, but the people that get in that predicament, that have those serious illnesses, you know, it's not a huge amount, but it's something that can certainly help. So I think it's well worth, worth money that we'll spend.
And if I can add one more thing, you all heard about the goal that the HR put out about a year ago, and we partnered with LMC and the principals and cabinet and a number of groups around, that basically, we want to make Bloomington a great place to work. And that we want to take care of the emotional and physical well-being of all of our employees, you know, to the best of our ability. And I think this really helps that, I mean, plays right to that goal to help do that. And you have a couple of people, also a couple of board members who serve on LMC, and they might have comments around that also.
Just one question I'd have. At the rate of the premium for the coming year, and a $2,000 maximum for incidents, do, do we have potential for 23 people to have a critical illness? What, what's our occurrence rate over the last few years?
I haven't, we haven't kept exact figures, but I know there, in the last six months, we had two or three cancers, even that in itself, and that was, those were fairly significant. Critical illness, I'd say, you know, will we get close to that number? Most people won't write a policy without, obviously, wanting some kind of profit off of it. They don't, they won't, they won't eat up all the premium and claims if they can help it. So I hope that we have less than 23, 24, but I think that we've had a good 15, 20 in certain years.
The reason I ask is it seems, since we're saying we're paying it out of the self-insurance fund, if that isn't also something that would be just as, work out just as well financially, we self-insured for $2,000 per occurrence rather than paying a premium greater than what the anticipated payout might be?
We couldn't do that. The federal law basically says that, I mean, that would be...
Yeah, ideal.
We actually discussed that before now. But federal law, because we have a high deductible health savings account that's qualified by the federal government, that would be in violation of the plan, to give one benefit to someone else over another.
Board member questions or further discussion? Are you ready to vote? All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And carries?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brad. Appreciate you coming to the table, and good work being done by the Labor Management Committee in order to come up with some new options and put some more things before the board that benefits our employees. Next on our agenda is a resolution regarding committed fund balance categories. Who would care to make that motion? Director Bergstrom?
I'll take a stab at it. It resolved that the School Board of Independent School District Number 271 approves the following committed fund balance categories for the 2012-2013 fiscal year. One, workers' compensation insurance. Two, third-party medical assistance. Three, wellness dollars. Four, band, uniform, and instrument replacement. Five, operating referendum. Six, transportation. Seven, transportation building. Eight, transportation bus purchases. Nine, severance insurance. Ten, technology replacement. Eleven, energy savings. Twelve, security systems. Thirteen, staff development. Fourteen, athletics and activities.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, and our Director of Finance, Rod Zivkovich, is at the table to explain and answer questions. Rod?
Chair Culver, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members are here tonight to do a process that we've had to do for the last three years. It's based on the Government Accounting Standards Board 54, which requires that districts set aside our committed fund categories before June 30th of each year. Then at a, in November, when we bring the audit report, the audit report will have the dollars associated with those for the board to approve at that point in time. What you're approving today is just the categories for our committed funds for this next year.
Any questions, Rod? Everybody understand what we're at here? All right then, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And it carries. And the last item on our regular agenda here is the budget adoption. Again, Director Bergstrom.
All right. It resolved that the School Board of Independent School District Number 271 approved the proposed 2013-2014 revenue and expenditure budgets for all funds.
Second.
Moved and seconded. You have a little further background information here, including on the backside of this sheet, some numbers in various categories, and it is a matter that's been brought to workshop study sessions of the board, so we've had some previous information shared with us. Now's the time to raise questions. Rod, would you like to make any further explanation before we move into discussion?
No, I, I believe that we, we covered it in our two works, our two study sessions, and then also, I believe I provided the board this week with the three questions that you had at the last study session, detailed information on those three questions.
Thank you for that written correspondence to all of us. Anything further board members would like to discuss, or questions you have at this time before moving ahead with the overall budget for 2013-2014? And we'll move to a vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? It carries. Thank you. We've reached the end of our Part B agenda. We now move into an opportunity for board member reports. Director Bergstrom?
Just have one thing on the, on the list today. It was an honor and a privilege to attend the Metropolitan Learning Alliance graduation over at Olson Middle School, two weeks ago, I think it was. We were able to sit up on the stage and listen to some compelling stories. It's interesting to see how these students get from point A to point B, and the road that they travel isn't always as straight as, as some of the students that go to, say for instance, Kennedy or Jefferson, but they, they struggle and they persevere nonetheless. So it was really, really fun to be a part of that.
Other board member reports? Director Bush?
I had probably one of the most unusual meetings. It was the last board meeting of our Metropolitan Learning Alliance a few days ago. And that is our school at the Mall of America, which has been there since they opened. And the districts involved now are Bloomington, Minneapolis, St. Paul, and Ridgefield. And it's been a good experience. Bloomington did the money operations and so forth, but so less is probably had to be over than the other administrators. But it has been a good relationship. And the mall did furnish us with quite a bit of space that we didn't have to pay the cost for. I mean, we paid, but not what the next tenant will pay for rent of space. And so, you know, there's always change as you go along, having been here for 32 years, but have closed lots of schools and done a lot of different things, you know, that might not be your first choice to do. But anyway, that is closed, and the students will move on, and they will lease the space. So I don't know if you want to add something?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank the Mall of America, like you said, and Sue Bunton, the Executive Director of the Mall of M.L.A., and the M.L.A. team for all their use and service.
And let's also acknowledge Director Bush, who is our one and only board member to the entire length of our involvement with the Metropolitan Learning Alliance, currently board chair.
Always.
Always board chair. So thank you for your...
Nobody else has ever been board chair of the Mall of America.
We appreciate your representing us and the commitment of time that that took for you to attend those meetings and be part of the governance of that school. Thank you. Are there other board member reports? Director Bergstrom?
I'm just reminded of one other thing I have. I'd like to establish a closed session at our next board meeting for purposes of superintendent evaluation. The, that next meeting will be July 22nd.
I second that.
Okay, moved and seconded, a closed meeting for the purpose of a personnel committee meeting. Prior to our next meeting, you said the date was the 22nd.
22nd of July, I'd like to have that at 6:00 PM.
At 6:00 PM. Discussion? And move to the vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We have set a special meeting, a closed session before our next general meeting on the 22nd. Any other board member reports?
Let me just briefly report that the Association of Metropolitan School Districts Executive Committee met last Friday. An item of business we have during the summer is evaluation of our executive director. And people have replied to that, and there'll be consolidated information and recommendations going forward, working relationship with the executive director. I'm very pleased with his work and communicated that to the evaluation committee. In addition, there are recognitions that are given almost every year by our membership association, AMSD, to some people who are leaders for youth issues in the state. Quite frequently, that has gone to state legislators, recent, about two years ago, I think it went to the governor. Again, legislators are primarily the people that are proposed, but no final decisions have been made yet, but there's a nominations list that was put together, discussed by the executive committee. Also in that executive committee, we received a final report on legislative activities as they relate to our legislative goals. You have heard from the superintendent about that in terms of how legislation, that we, we collaborate on those efforts with the AMSD, how legislation has moved forward that our board supports and gave an information program and, and met with our legislators about. And so that process will be starting for the new year, but we should acknowledge the value we get from our lobbying organization, because that's why it was created, AMSD, which has an overall board of one board member and the superintendent of each one of our member districts. So it's a rather large board of directors. I'm pleased that I was invited to serve on the executive committee. That term is up as of July 1st, and we won't be directly representing the executive committee, but you all are always welcome to attend AMSD board meetings. In fact, both Director Bergstrom, Director Corbman, joined me at a workshop that we had just a week ago on Tuesday, in which AMSD was the main presenter on the progress of bills at the legislature this year. So they are recognized as the experts in the area, they do a fine job, and I want to encourage our continued participation with that organization. Well, that's my speech about my involvement. Are there any other board director reports?
Director Hibbs?
I think it's probably worth noting that Nellie and I hosted a meeting for potential school board candidates last Tuesday. Three people were in attendance. We provided some hard copy materials to those folks, but if there's other folks that are contemplating running for school board, I'm sure they can contact the superintendent's office and Mrs. Bunton, and get that information emailed to them.
Okay, thank you. Other board reports? And Superintendent Fujitaki, superintendent's report?
I just have a request. Administration has discussed with the school board chair the upcoming July 4th holiday period and the schedule, and the need for the July 8th school board, scheduled school board meeting. Based on those discussions, administration requests a motion to cancel the July 8th school board meeting.
All right, so moved.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Everyone understands that we've had an understanding, we were not going to meet on July 8th, and superintendent's asked that be put in motion, since it is in fact on our agenda. Any discussion? Then let's move to the vote. All those in favor canceling July 8th meeting, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Done. Anything further? It's our time for other business, anything else for the good of the day? This will be followed by a study session immediately upon adjourned. Well, let's take three minutes, then we'll come back into session at 8:33. Lyle? Did you have something else at your table?
I am, I guess. I'm the rookie of the board, so I was asking, is the 15th on or off? Director Bergstrom said that's as needed, and that's a—
It would need to be announced as a meeting. We could, in the interim, we could have members of the school board request that, or at the chair's discretion, we can add a meeting on the 15th for a study session.
Okay, and we're not adding it, so—
Not at this time, but with three days' business days' notice, we can do that in the future. Thanks for the question.
Needs some education.
All right, this meeting is adjourned.
...based on the state waiver, and how the data will be used to hold schools accountable. And then finally, something about the pathway analysis. Now, the history of testing for graduation in Minnesota goes back to 1996, when the Minnesota Basic Standards tests were developed and implemented. And those assessments were meant to be just basic level, a minimum competency test. And those tests were in place from 1996 to 2007, when they started using the grad test. And the different thing about the grad test was, it was embedded within the high standards, so that, you know, it was, part of the MCA assessment were items that were necessary to master in order to graduate. Now with this next iteration of assessments, we're going to be looking at clearly aligning with higher standards of college readiness. And so, the state is moving towards having plans for all students for post-secondary. The grad testing, first of all, the actual grad tests are no longer required in Minnesota as of the passage of the legislation. So, we were informed a week after the passage of the legislation that students no longer had to pass the grad tests to graduate, and that some of our students who hadn't passed the grad tests could potentially graduate if they could take an assessment that was aligned with the new college readiness standards. So, students can, students and families can decide to finish up the grad test if they want. If a student just had one more math test to take, they can certainly do that, and they would be eligible to graduate. But especially if they haven't passed the reading test, which has a cut score, they may choose to take a different type of an assessment. And the assessments that are accepted as replacements for the grad are listed on the, on this, on this overhead. The ACT assessment, which is your college entrance assessment that most Midwest colleges accept, is one of those assessments. And you would take the reading, math, science, and English portions. And if you do, then you can graduate.
With any, with any score?
With any score, as long as you take it. And if you, especially not headed for college, you may want to take an assessment called the Work Keys Job Skills Assessment, and many special ed students take that assessment. There's a Compass College Placement Test, that's by the rival company, the, it's the SAT and the ACT, and the SAT company makes the compass assessment. And then there's the Armed Services Vocational Test, so it's an aptitude test which all potential military take to get into the military. That counts. The Accuplacer, which is required by many, if not most, two-year colleges. Normandale provides the Accuplacer free of cost if you're applying to Normandale. Other two-year technical colleges would do the same. But in order to take that, you have to apply for fall registration. And then, any other equivalent college placement test. So it was up to counselors and staff members at the high school to identify the students who hadn't passed the grad test, who had completed all of their other requirements. The main requirements are that you have to have so many credits in each area of math, science, et cetera. But there were 15 students in the two high schools that had completed all those requirements, hadn't passed the reading test yet, and they had this option. So, the counselors and faculty then made individual plans with those students to see if they wanted to take the ACT in the fall, if they wanted to do the Accuplacer and head for a two-year college, or take one of these other exams. So this is brand-new. There's no specific information available to parents or the community on the state website yet. They said it's coming. But I thought it would be useful for us to discuss it tonight, just to give you kind of the general themes of how these assessments are going to affect children in Bloomington. And so, as you noted, there are no cut scores for passing these exams. Most of the students who haven't passed the reading test also needed to take other coursework, but the 15 students who hadn't passed were all ELL students, students from different countries that had done okay in their classwork, but still were trying to pass that reading test. So then, are there any questions about that section? I can take this kind of one thing at a time.
I have two. That last bullet down there, equivalent college placement assessment, does that then refer to the SAT test?
Yes, you could take the SAT test, and the state is coming out with a more expansive list of other potential assessments that could be taken. If a new assessment is developed by a company that meets the standards, they will add that to the list. So, it's, it will most likely be the case that students in the future will pass this element of the grad by taking the ACT, because the major change was to replace the grad test with ACT for all students in high school, virtually all. There may be some special ed students that it's not appropriate to take the ACT. They probably would take the Work Keys Assessment. But by and large, the majority of the students in the future, and it'll be paid for by the state.
Oh.
It'll be paid for by the state, and the assessments will most likely take place during the school day in the future, so that, the thing that we don't know for sure is they have to get this contract in place. They don't say ACT, because they're not allowed to name a vendor in the law, but it's assumed that the ACT is going to bid for this state's contract, and that they have a good chance of getting the contract. It could be the SAT company that would win out, but as I mentioned, almost all the Midwest colleges require the ACT.
Now, that seems interesting to me. It's almost philosophically, instead of just having, this is a culminating test, congratulations, you've finished. It's creating an articulation between high school and college by essentially requiring students to take a college assessment that they can then use to apply.
Yeah, I think it has a real possibility for identifying students that may not have thought they were college material. People, you know, have made judgments, and, you know, the best kind of judgments that they can, but talking to my colleagues in Minneapolis and in Moundsview, where they already have this policy in place where all students take the ACT, they were pleasantly surprised to find students in poverty and students, you know, of color, who might not have thought they were headed for college. There may not have been other adults in their life that had gone to college, and that clearly the assessment said, you should fill out the FAFSA, do the whole thing, have a good chance to get into college, and there's lots of money, financial aid available for students who need it. So, so that, that has been a good experience in those two districts, and I think it'll be a good experience for us as well. Other questions about the grad part of it? I try to keep it to one slide per concept, so the next, the next slide deals with the elementary and middle school exams. Now, we are quite familiar with the type of exam that the state is talking about for elementary and middle school, because the law really is looking for a MAP-type assessment. Again, they don't name the name of any particular assessment company, but the assessment will be computer adaptive, and that means that children who are in third or fourth grade reading at an eighth grade level will eventually get eighth grade-type items. Students who are in third or fourth grade reading at a first grade level will eventually get items at that level. get items at that level. Every parent and child will get information back on what they can do. And it's a lot more valid assessment for kids at the top of the, of the achievement spectrum, and for children who are special needs students. The current state assessment, the MCA3s are adaptive, but they're just adaptive within the grade level. So you can only go up to the top of fourth grade, when, when you're looking at taking a fourth-grade test. And we still have students that get them all right, and you have no idea what their true achievement level is. And on the other hand, we have kids that are struggling, that really get wiped out by the test, because they can't answer any of the questions right. So, this is an improvement in terms of, of assessing the true ability levels of students. It also provides excellent information for growth. And, and one of the big things, big changes with the state waiver of no child left behind is that growth is, is the centerpiece. That we're going to measure how much learning takes place during the year, and hold ourselves accountable for learning, no matter where the student starts. So if the student starts above the standards, we're not just going to say, oh, they've made the standards, we really don't have to work with those students. No, those students have to accelerate, as well as the students who are below the standards. So, I think this replacement of the MCA3s will look a lot like our MAP assessment, could possibly be the MAP assessment. I believe that the people at NWA, the company that makes the MAP test, will probably be one of the vendors that bids on this assessment. And the, the scales for these type of assessment are what they call vertical scales. So you'd have a numerical system that would go from maybe 100 to 400, and it would be seamless. And so you could measure growth at any point along the way, and it would mean the same thing. So those are some of the aspects of the assessments for elementary and middle schools. And our teachers would be quite familiar with it, since we've been using the MAP and the CULT, which was based on the MAP items for many years now. Any questions on the elementary and middle school assessments?
Just, just one, David.
Yes, please.
I'm looking at the second, the second bullet in the first, under number one, the tests are more difficult than the MCA II assessments, and will have a lower proficiency rate when reported in August. Are we basically talking about the guys that are struggling to start with?
Yeah, we had this happen when the, the math tests changed from MCA II to MCA III. They raised the difficulty of the standards, and all the test scores in the state dropped by 20%. This is, I think, going to happen again with the reading. In fact, the commissioner sent out a letter to the superintendent and the test directors saying, please communicate with your board and the community that you cannot compare the results of this year's test to last year. They should have done that with the math, because it was great panic. People thought, all of a sudden, our math skills have fallen through the floor, when it turned out, we, it was intentional. The standards were more difficult, the test was more difficult. And that's kind of the problem with the MCAs in general, was every four or five years, they change the standards, they change the tests. The test would either be more difficult or easier. Sometimes the scores would all go up, some all down. And the nice thing about this new proposal for assessments beyond the MCA3s is that the scale will never change. If you get an NWA-type assessment, it would be on the same scale. And you can change the standards, but it wouldn't change the scale of the test. Be a lot easier for us to make longitudinal comparisons. Essentially, we have to start a new baseline this year with the reading test, and can't compare to previous years. Thank you for catching that. And I also forgot to mention that these assessments are now aligned with the Common Core national standards. And so, there, I have heard that the Common Core is a more difficult set of standards, and that's one of the reasons why the tests are going to be more difficult. Yes, please.
Can you change the slides?
Oh, sorry. Okay. I think we've covered that now. Paper and pencil tests, for the next period of time, are still going to be an option. But once we get to these new assessments, computer adaptive assessments, the state and I are really hoping that all the computerized assessments work. We had trouble with a vendor that was used for the state this year, and I, I can see why teachers are leery about going to fully computerize until they get all the glitches out. But hopefully, we'll be moving to computerized assessments for all students, so that teachers and students can get immediate feedback. Right now, as you know, the state test results come back in July and August. All the students have left, and the teachers, you know, have kind of lost some interest in the scores by the time they show up in the paper. So, hopefully, we can get this computer adaptive assessment to work. Now, what is the new state accountability system? I mentioned that the No Child Left Behind law has, is still on the books, but many states have put in waivers that have been accepted by the Commissioner of Education at the federal level. And these waivers have tended to concentrate on closing the achievement gap and growth, high growth for all students. And that's what the state built into its waiver request. I sat on the committee that came up with these new measures, and there's a lot of compromise going on. I would have liked to see even more emphasis on growth, and some of the high achieving districts wanted to see more emphasis on proficiency. And we ended up with a compromise where a third of the, the points that are assigned are based on proficiency, a third is based on growth, and a third is based on closing the achievement gaps. And I thought I'd just give you some brief examples of what that looks like. And I put the calculations in the appendices, if you're really interested, but I'm not going to go through those in detail. So, this is called the Multiple Measures Rating System. And it's actually three different ways of looking at the same data. It's still one assessment, the MCA test. But when you look at proficiency, you look at point at time, and the kids who are enrolled in your school at that point in time when they take the test. When you look at growth, you look at a cohort of students that were there last year, they're this year, continuously enrolled in the school, and then you're looking at how much progress made. And then the gaps, the way that's defined is, each one of the subgroups is compared to its counterpart, so that if you're comparing ELL students, they're compared to non-ELL students, and on how much learning took place. And so, I'll go through each one of those, and we can ask questions along the way, if you'd like. The fourth component is graduation rate, which applies to high school. So here are the four areas: proficiency, student growth, achievement gap closure, and then for high schools, the graduation rate. Each domain is worth 25 points, so there are 100 total points for high schools, 75 total points for elementary and middle school. And each MMR is basically a score from zero to 100, which you can think of as a percentage. The, the way this is reported on the state website looks something like this. You have three bars. The red bar is proficiency, the green bar is growth, and the blue bar is achievement gap reduction. And so, in each one of these, and you can see any school in the state on the state website, and you can compare schools within the district, or you can find comparable schools that have similar demographics in other districts. I spent some time before the board meeting, looked at other, other districts, and trying to find out which were the schools that really got the rewards, and what kind of characteristics did they have. It's fascinating if you've, if you've got an evening or a weekend to go through the state website. Basically, what you do to find these data is to go to the state MDE website, and you click on Data Center, and then you, there's a section for Parents and Educators. So you go to the Parents site, and you see one set of graphs that show the progress of schools over the last three years. You go to the Educator site, and you see this. This is more complicated, gives information about what the percentile rank was for the school in each one of these categories. This example happens to be Washburn Elementary in Bloomington, and at the bottom of the page, it says that the, the school was in the 99th percentile of all schools in the state in terms of proficiency. It was at the 55th percentile for growth, and 55th percentile for gap reduction. And that resulted in a total score that made it eligible for a celebration school. The top 10% of the schools in the state are called reward schools, the next 10% are called celebration schools. So, we're fortunate to have one of those celebration schools in the district. And it was interesting, you know, Washburn has over 50% poverty. So I started looking down the list to see if there were any other schools in the state that had this reward status, or celebration status, and also had over 50% poverty, and there aren't very many. And the ones that are, I want to talk to and see what they're doing, you know, what their achievement looks like. The, the state put this model in, but the one thing that I pushed really hard for was some money to follow up on these schools, that the state would go out and find out, what are these people doing to be able to produce such growth? But right now, there's no money to do that. And so, I've told some of the principals that wanted to see a comparable school, here's a school with comparable demographics that had a, had a higher MMR, and our principals have contacted some of these schools. But more and more, we have to build networks, so that we can learn from folks that are having great success. A lot of, a lot of districts have talked to Washburn about their success. So, the way the points work, without getting into too much detail, proficiency is the same as it was under No Child Left Behind. There's, there's a calculation method. So you get one point for every student who's proficient, and you get a half a point for every student who's partially proficient. You add those points up and divide by the total number of students, and you get what's called an index rate. And this index rate is what had to go up to 100% under the old No Child Left Behind, and nobody was making it, you know, all the schools were getting identified. Now they're not identifying any more schools based on proficiency. They don't have any hit lists, and they don't have any consequences like having to restart the school, fire the principal, et cetera. They've taken away all those consequences, but they still have the information on proficiency available on this website. So, it's very much the same in terms of its basic calculation, but the biggest change is, each one of these proficiency levels, for each one of the subgroups, there's all students, then there are the five racial/ethnic groups, free and reduced price lunch, English language learner, special ed status. If you, if you hit your target on all of those, and that's what Washburn did, then you would be at the 99th percentile and get all the points. Most schools in the state miss on one or more subgroups. And it used to be, if you didn't have enough kids in the subgroup, you didn't have to worry. So if you only had 10 kids in poverty in your whole district, it basically weren't accountable for them. Now they weight by the square root of the number of students. So, you know, it's, if you have four students, it gets weighted two. If you have 100 students, it gets weighted 10. So instead of, you know, a 10 to 4 ratio, it's like a, you know, a 100 to 4 ratio, it's now a 10 to 2 ratio. So, folks now have to have more success with their students of color, their students in poverty, their special ed and ELL students, to be able to, to end up with high proficiency ratings. That may be more detail than you really want to know, but... Now, the achievement gap reduction use, oh, this is growth. Growth is basically the same concept that we use with the NWA MAP tests. We look at the student when they were in fourth grade, what their score was, and then we find out what's the average for students in fourth grade who had that pre-test score when they take their fifth-grade test. That becomes the state norm now. So there's a state norm for every grade level, for every possible point on the distribution. So if you had a 350 in third grade, it could be the state average is a 446 in fifth, in fourth grade. And so, that would be the average, and then they put what's called standard deviations around it, and create a Z-score. But basically, if the Z-score is zero, that means you're right at the state average. If you have a positive number, it's above the state average. If you have a negative number, it's below. And you can't see, because this is such a, a, I'm not sure if I can even do it with my glasses. The number of points then for, for growth is based on the Z-score. And for Washburn, it was a Z-score of .19. So, it was two tenths of a standard deviation about on the average, which put them at the 55th percentile. So the higher you get above the state average on your growth, the more points you get towards these rewards. And that's about all I want to say about growth, other than that it was the thing that I was most excited about. I really wanted to see the state even emphasize it more. I wanted to see 50% of the weight be based on gap reduction, and, you know, 40% based on growth, and only 10% based on proficiency. But it ended up 33, 33, 33. So, schools that have very little poverty, they still don't have much weight when it comes to the, the growth and the gap reduction, but it's a lot better than it used to be. So then, how do they do the, the gap reduction? The gap reduction is measuring the growth of, for say, for example, your ELL students compared to the state's non-ELL. So, if your ELL population, you know, is doing really well, you don't necessarily compare it to the non-ELL in Bloomington, you compare it to the state level. And so, it doesn't punish you for having really high growth. So the state average for non-ELL students. And then, it weights that by the number of ELL students. It does the same thing for special ed. Your specialized kids versus the state's non-special ed growth. Your African-American kids versus the state white students, et cetera. So each one of these groups gets put together. And districts with the most subgroups have the least chance of getting this, this growth rating high, but as I say, it's a lot more fair than the, the other system used to be. So, gap is rated, it's the first time the state has been able to directly use gap calculations in accountability with the feds, and I'm really pleased that we've moved that far. And it is difficult to explain. Unfortunately, the state didn't have any money to really do much education about this. So we've been into this three years, and a lot of districts still don't know about this MMR, and exactly how it's calculated, and, and how it's going to be used for accountability. The cool thing is, there are rewards, there are acknowledgements. It's not all about punishment, it's not all about blaming folks that happen to have very diverse populations. But it is a challenge, that you really have to make progress with each one of your subgroups, students of color, students in poverty, to really do well. Any questions on that component? MMR, I, I should have put the website up there, but I think it's probably easiest if, if folks that are listening to this conversation just go to Minnesota Department of Education, click on the Data tab, and then go to Parents and Educators. And you'll be able to find this on any school.
To go into the educator one, do you need a password and a username and all that?
No, I, I think it's kind of silly, they, they've had two different categories, because the information in the Parents' site is different from the Educator, and you need both. The Parents' site gives you the trend, the three-year trend, and then the Educator's site gives you these three categories with the bar. And I, I think parents should be able to see both, but there isn't a password. To actually get into our individual school calculations, you would need a password. And I've got a password for all of Bloomington's schools. And I've got a password for all Bloomington schools. But, you know, that, that information, we're going to make available through school information reports. I'm working on school information reports for each of the schools that will be part of my website or the REA website, so it'll be easy to access as well. As much as possible, we want transparency with the community around our learning gaps. And we want to make sure people understand how different schools and districts are getting these ratings. Any other questions that I can help with? We can always come back. Now the pathway analysis. Okay, Washburn was a celebration school, so, you know, there's a good example of how this is being used to acknowledge great work. So the pathways analysis, we, we have the potential now, if the state would adopt something like the MAP test as the state test to reduce some of our assessments. Since we give both the MCA and the MAP test in the spring, if the MAP test became the state test, we could reduce our spring testing in half, which I think the teachers would really like. We could concentrate more on the prevention side, having more students taking assessments in the fall to predict how they would do in the spring and to intervene. We're already doing that in a lot of schools. And the nice thing about this would be the same scale would be used for fall, winter and spring. So if a child came in in the middle of the year, you wanted to pick up their level, see if they're on track for the standards at the end of the year, you could test them in the winter. And so it is, since we've done the pathway work already, we wouldn't have to reinvent the pathways. If they choose a different type of assessment, we're going to have to put in a pathway for the new state test. But that's, that's work we can do. It just would be, there are a lot of people that we're pushing the legislature to make the MAP, the state test, because two-thirds of the districts in the state are using the MAP tests and three-fourths of the students in the state take a MAP test. So that would be efficiency if we went to something like that. We will have to recalibrate our pathways now that we have MCA3s for the reading. And that's something I'll do as soon as we get the scores this summer. Now, when we look at the pathways rainbow, wait, wait a minute, where did the rainbow go? Rainbow didn't make it. Okay, well, if you remember the rainbow, it's on mine, I must have had a second version here. The rainbow had a line that said "on track to graduate." That was based on the old grad tests. And so we really don't have an "on track to graduate" anymore based on a test score. What we're going to replace the "on track to graduate" with will be some of this work on aligning to workforce standards. So if we can, can find out what the typical ACT score is for kids that go on to certain kinds of professions and workforce right after high school, then we can put those in, in place of the grad test. The two-year, the four-year, the college readiness, you know, the University of Minnesota, Carleton, they're all staying the same, but that bottom line, which was "on track to graduate", we're going to have to replace it, that, that with other types of kind of technical skills. And I look forward to doing that. I don't think anybody in the country's done that. So the more information we can get on some of these assessments for workforce readiness, the better. So that's all I wanted to cover in the brief updates. If you're interested in the actual calculation, algorithms, they're in the appendices. But I don't think it's necessary for one to know that much of detail at this point. So if there are any questions, I'd be glad to take them.
Yes, Nellie.
Yes, going back to slide four.
Yes.
When we talk about elementary and middle school exams. I was just wondering if those are expected to be more difficult than previous assessments and have a lower proficiency, sorry, proficiency rate when reported in August. Then how is that going to affect placement for students in the DEA program if some of those students are placed based on?
Based on MCA scores, yeah. We're going to have to communicate as rapidly as possible what the new cut scores are for any assessments aligned to the pathways. The MCA3 for reading is going to be more difficult. So it could be that, you know, in the past, the scale score of 370 might have been, you know, appropriate for getting into gifted. It may be that it's a different skill score now. So we'll have to make that adjustment. I think most of the students are placed on the basis of the MAP test. And the nice thing is the MAP test hasn't changed at all. It's got the same difficulty level, the same kind of characteristics for predicting future success. I didn't talk a lot about the, the middle school exams, but we are taking them already. The eighth grade exam is called Explore. The 10th grade exam is called The Plan. And then in 11th grade, you can start taking the regular ACT. The nice thing about the Explore and the Plan is they've been calibrated to the ACT. You know exactly what you have to get on the Explore to be on track for a two-year college or a four-year college. And we've already started sharing that information with middle schools. So our MAP test will go up through seventh grade. And then starting in eighth grade, we'll do the Explore. And then in 10th, we'll do the Plan and then the regular ACT. So the, the state also built into this new model that they'll pay for all of those. So there won't be any cost to the district for giving these. And it's, it's not only achievement, a battery of tests, but it also gives you quite a bit of information about student interests. And so it's similar to the interest exams that we took maybe when we were in middle school and I found out that I had negative two on, on doing anything with my hands, that I should be a social worker or a computer operator and definitely not a forester. But it will give information to the, the teachers and the parents about interest areas kind of matching to other career professionals who have taken similar exams. So that'll be helpful both at eighth and 10th. And, and so it's an exciting period of time. People are wondering if we're lowering standards. I think we're raising standards. I, I really think by giving college readiness exams to everybody, we're having high expectations for all. And our high schools are moving towards standards-based grading. And it's not so easy to get a passing grade as it might have been in the past. And so most of our kids will kind of be going through a gateway of having to pass all of their areas to, to be certified for graduation. It'll no longer be the case, however, that we'll have mostly ELL kids calling to say, "I've been accepted to a two-year college, but I can't go unless I pass this darn grad test." So, and I've had that both in Bloomington and in Minneapolis. And I think, you know, I think, I think it's a good thing overall.
Since the ACT is going to be the, the norm test at the high school level.
I believe it will be, yeah.
Is the ACT company or is it the universities, are they going to accept those scores? Because I would assume that the, the testing atmosphere, environment will be less strict and so forth.
Yeah.
But they're going to accept them?
As, as a matter of fact, virtually every Midwestern college requires the ACT or accepts the ACT. Carleton would prefer the SAT, but they'll take the ACT. But almost all the colleges have ACT as a requirement, so they pay lots of attention to it. And I don't think anybody ever paid attention to MCA scores. They really, the, the colleges really did not value those scores. And I don't think it helps students or hurts students, depending on which way they went with the.
If I had to take the ACT on a Saturday morning last year, what was the cost of that?
Oh, good question. Did you know?
Forty-five.
Yeah, it sounds about right. And we do give scholarships to students. And so we, students in need can, can get reduced prices right now, but as soon as the state takes over. And I think we made a commitment in, in cabinet that we were going to come up with the money. If the state didn't get their contract together with ACT on time, the district was going to pay for ACT for all. So we would start the same policy that Minneapolis and Moundsview did. I think the state will. And then it's a question of whether they pay for one or two times, you know. It, it may be that they'll only pay for the first time, I'm not sure. So we'll have to look at, you know, how, how much money we're going to get in reimbursement.
Go ahead, Nick.
So as flawed as the grad test might have been, what sort of independent or third-party measure does a student in Minnesota now have that they're actually ready for the workforce or for post-secondary education?
I think these ACT scores will give them really good feedback. First of all, where they're, they're scoring about the range of kids that get into two-year colleges or get into four-year colleges. And then there was this huge study that was done by ACT to predict whether you'd get a B or better in, in your freshman year of college. So if you're at that level, you can be assured not only will you get into a college, but you won't have to take remedial work in math, especially math. So I think there'll be good feedback there that students are ready. And, and we can work with the community colleges and technical colleges to, to, to get more of a sense. But right now, they use the Accuplacer because, you know, a lot of the students didn't want to pay to take the ACT. But now they're going to have the Accuplacer and the ACT information available. So they'll be able to provide good feedback to, to students. The big problem with the grad test was the math. You know, when they set the, the benchmark for the math MCA, they set it so high that half of the students in the, the country would not pass our MCA test. And so when they tied the grad test to it, they saw that 30 to 40% of the kids in Minnesota wouldn't have graduated had they made that math grad test required. And so they quick backed off and said, "Well, you just have to fail it three times and then you can graduate." But that's not a very good policy. So, you know, I think the policy people were looking at, well, do we tweak that, that math test and continue the same road of kind of trying to come up with minimum competency? Or do we do something dramatic and align everything with college readiness? And I think we had, had good testimony from the colleges as well as K-12 saying they were ready to go to this college readiness approach.
But the issue for a lot of our students that graduate is that they aren't planning on going on to post-secondary, at least not immediately. And they're going to go into the workforce. And, and the businesses in Minnesota are saying, you know, one of our biggest problems is students don't have the math skills they need to be successful in our business, whether it's working in the mine or the paper mill or the manufacturing plant. So, you know, that's the part I'm worried about is we have a fairly significant amount of our graduates who are going to go into the workforce. What assurances do they have that they're actually prepared for the workforce?
Well, these ACT scores will be on the transcript. And so all the employers will get these ACT scores and see what level of mathematics the students are at. Folks in engineering are going to know what kind of scores they need to see. Folks in social service areas will be looking at a different cut, cut score. So I think over time, these employers are going to value the information more than they got from the grad. I think they'll actually find that these assessments actually predict better. But yeah, it'll be, it'll be having to gather information. Like I said, I don't know of any studies to say exactly what kinds of scores on an ACT or an Accuplacer predict success in certain trades, you know, to be an electrician.
There are, there are studies ACT has done that say that, that students going into college and students going into the workforce need to have similar skill sets. So, so those, those cut scores at ACT states are, you know, the ones that if you get, if you hit B, you'll have a 70% chance of getting a B or a C or whatever it is. The implication of the study I've seen is that if you think you're going to go into the workforce, well, you probably need that 21 just as much as you need that 21 to go in to college. But, you know, the concern I have is.
I think a lot more work has been done on the college readiness than the workforce readiness. So I need to read a lot more to, to check out the studies because this is an area that I, I think we need to do more work with our local business leaders as well as with the colleges and universities to provide as much information as we can. And we have to remember it is just one source of information. A test score isn't the whole, you know, it's not even close to the whole thing for getting into college. And it certainly wouldn't be for the workforce either. But it is useful information. If you have a good test, it's really predictive. And I just don't think, I don't think the grad test provided the same depth of information that we're going to see from the ACT.
It just seems like we have a bit of a hole in our pathway.
Yeah, I agree. It's an area that I need to do a lot of work in.
Well, are there some of the tests that are identified here on the slide three? The Work Keys Job Skills Assessment, are you familiar with that one? Or what is involved with the ASVAB and how that measures like math skills? So I'm thinking that might be.
I have a lot, I have a lot to learn about these alternative assessments. I know my dad got a perfect score on that, that military one, and so I had a hard time following his footsteps.
So there, there may be some alternatives that we can work into the system in terms of everyone's taking the ACT, but in terms of other work readiness, we could possibly use other assessments so that there's a profile the student can carry forward?
Yes, Chair Carter, I think that's an excellent observation. I think we need to fit the assessment to the purpose. And especially for the kids that aren't planning to go on to a two-year or four-year college, we need to make sure the assessments are helping them. And I'll need to work very closely with our vocational department to see what kinds of assessments they have in place already. I don't think we've done any work to kind of align those as well.
Because I relate to what you were saying about your career assessment experience because I remember learning I wasn't destined to be a watchmaker or a lock fixer from taking that kind of, of exam. I think as a ninth grader, I went through a battery and completed that for the guidance department.
I think the parents will find that useful.
What about the logistics of this? I assume the test is going to be taken in spring. And the district will have to order these tests. So come September, October, somebody's going to have, a student is most likely going to have to make a decision, "I'm going to take this test or that test."
Yep, the ACT is available in the fall, end of the spring. And I think we're going to encourage kids that were on that 15-student list of kids that hadn't graduated to take the ACT. If they haven't taken the Accuplacer this summer, we have scholarships available for students that need it and to get them to take it. Then, to be determined on all this stuff I'm getting from the state, we're going to have to have a lot of detail on how we're going to set up these situations within the school. We can talk to our colleagues in Moundsview and Minneapolis to see how they did it. I think they did it within the regular high school instead of going offsite to do it. And there may be some advantage there. It's a more common environment. Students might do their best if they're in a comfortable environment, but we'll have to talk about that.
Your, your example with Moundsview was they were, essentially all students were ACT.
Yeah. Virtually every student, I'm sure there are more severely disabled special ed students that didn't take it. But, and they were very pleased with the results that they identified kids that really could channel themselves towards college. On the other hand, there are kids that are thinking, you know, "It's, it's a breeze. I'm going to go to Harvard." And, and really their scores indicate they've got a ways to go before they could apply to Harvard. And, and that's what we built into our website for the teachers is we give a trend line of all the NWA scores. And then when they take the test in fifth grade, they can see, are they on track? Well, if they want to go to a four-year college, how much growth will they have to make? Do they have to make accelerated growth or are they on the path already? And. And I look forward to sharing that with the board at some point. The software is pretty cool. And Jim Angemeyer, my predecessor, put it together. So teachers are using it, are used it this spring. But more and more, we need to catch it early so that people aren't surprised that they're on track or not on track and do good planning with those students.
I'm not asking you to commit to anything at this time. It sounds as if you're indicating your preference would be for the sake of having standardized results. If we had everybody on the same page with an instrument like ACT--
Yeah.
--and the advantage of not having students opt out early is that you're identifying also some college-ready students who might not otherwise think they're on the path if they're taking the same exam others are and performing well.
I think so. I think virtually the whole state of Minnesota will be giving ACTs to their high schools. I think that'll be kind of the standard. But there are these other options. And the state wants to make sure that students could continue to take the grad test and use that reading cut score if they want. But it's more efficient to continue--
Yeah. In my experience in college recruitment, not infrequently that I heard from adult returning students, "Well, I didn't think I could go to college because I didn't take those grad tests. I didn't take my ACT."
Right.
They see that as a barrier for, you know, years afterwards. "I didn't do the test when I was just in high school. I won't even do much better now. I'll do worse."
These two school districts also had a concerted effort to make sure everybody filled out the FAFSA. So there are huge campaigns to get students to fill out their financial aid forms.
And that costs how much?
For the FAFSA? I just did it, yeah. I think it should be free.
Yes. So that's another service we can provide our students is to get that done too. Anything else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. It's great to see this information brought together in this way and shared with the board tonight. Thank you for being here now. And Rick Kaufman has some further information to share since our last meeting regarding our-- I'll let you take it. I won't try to frame what you're going to say, but it is related to that referendum resolution that we passed not long ago.
All right, thank you.
Chair Culver, Superintendent Fujitaki, members of the school board, thank you. Wanted to share with you the referendum information plan that you all have a copy of. This is the information campaign plan for what we have, are branding as Safe and Innovative Schools Referendum 2013. And I put the, up on the screen, the district's website because I'm going to take you to the special referendum website in a minute. But I want to share with you, not go into any detail about the plan, but to highlight some pieces to this. It's broken down, typically this is a planning for anything that we do in the community relations office around plans, large or small, we develop this kind of a concept. Keeps us on task and track for the types of things that we need to do to ensure that the tasks are getting done. So as you know, and we will reiterate this again tonight, and you'll probably hear us say this numerous times, the school district is responsible for the information campaign. As you recall from the last presentation, we will be doing our best to inform, educate, and engage our community around the information for the school safety and security recommendations as well as the next technologies for learning plan that Mr. Weiser has shared repeatedly as well. The citizens committee, a citizens committee, will be created. We graciously have two of our longtime community leaders in Addie Mattson and Karen Arazi who are at present are working on trying to identify chairs for that committee. That committee is specifically focused, or will specifically focus, on the advocacy piece. As school district employees, we cannot and will not do that on work time, but we will assist them on our, when we take vacation time or off-hours time. And also, we will share information with them because obviously they'll do purposes in terms of information getting out to the community. So I just want to make sure that we continue to keep that in the forefront, that this is all about information from the district's perspective. You see in the document that you have a copy of it, it's broken into months and then the weeks. We tried not to get too specific around days, but tied them to specific weeks. We have accomplished all of the things we said we were going to last week and are a good portion of the way through the current week, which includes the launch of the website. And I want to show you that. This is the front page of the district website. It's going to be a little slow to navigate just because we're moving things here. But when we, this is launched, it is live, but we will be releasing through our media channels, through press releases, our Facebook page and Twitter. And so what will come on here will be a permanent location identification for the website. However, where to find it, and we'll direct people to, is under About Us. Click on referendum. And so you'll see that the Safe and Innovative Schools Referendum 2013. Thank you, Mr. Holman, for sharing information for us. We had sort of a different logo and it bordered close to advocacy, so we did change it. But this is the webpage. If you look along the left-hand side, these are the navigation pieces under referendum, this superintendent's message, school safety, and I'll click on these in a minute, but the next technologies for learning, financial management, how to vote, frequently asked questions, a feedback form, and then whom to contact for more information. But this, what you see on the screen is really the information we've shared repeatedly about the referendum, the two initiatives, safety and security, and the next technologies for learning, the no-tax increase, financial plan around this, and then how to contact us. This is what we would call your front page of the referendum. You'll see two calendars on this page. This calendar, which will be along the right side of the page, will be specific to the referendum campaign. So for example, I mean, right now, you have the election day is November 5th, but other key dates that come up, we will be able to put those on the calendar as well. For example, what we'll post tomorrow is on tentatively planning for a July 11th community leaders meeting, which we will be inviting members of our legislators, members of the city council, school board members, and then candidates for both city council and school board to come to the community room 610, 610A for a brief presentation on the information. This is a suggestion, I think a dual suggestion by Mr. Abelin and Mr. Culver in response to conversations they've had with some of those community leaders. In addition, July 23rd, I believe is a Tuesday evening, July 11th is a Thursday, July 23rd, we're looking at a tentatively, a community kickoff rally that will be organized by the citizens committee. So real quickly then, draw your attention back. So the superintendent has a message that he crafted and talks a little bit about the referendum campaign. A link again to the website. This is what we will drive people to is the website. The school safety and security, this initiative really is the information with respect to recommendations. And then people can access the full report and full recommendation presentation as, if they wish, more information. The next technologies for learning, also very similar in the sense that we provide information, the three primary areas of digital content, anytime, anywhere learning, communicating personalized data. And what's taking a bit to load is a series of slides that is being used for some presentations. So then we also have what we call a sub-page, is financial management. Again, more information about the no-tax increase. And as information becomes available, more information on all of these areas, we will add them. This is very fluid. How to vote is a very popular, we get a lot of questions about this. This is taken from the city Bloomington website, city clerk's office, which is responsible for elections. So all this information is currently up to date. We work with Janet Lewis at the city on that. The other most frequently visited page is the frequently asked questions. We've set it up here in a couple ways. So we have separate pages for each of the questions that will fall into these four topical areas. And then the questions that we have so far received, some of these you'll recognize as questions you've posed in various meetings we've had related to these topics. And then we've got responses to them. So if you look at why is a capital project slightly needed, and you'll see all the questions under the finance side of that. Okay? So invite you to visit that page to continue to educate yourself, inform yourself about that information. And again, the frequently asked questions, we will continue to add those questions as they come in. And then finally, the feedback page, as it loads here. So anyone that wishes to share their information, their email address, subject area, it will help us to identify a category and then their message. It could be a frequently asked question they have, more information about either one. This gets read to a database. We will have access. Whenever a message comes in, we are identified. Our goal is to respond to every question within 48 hours. And those questions then will be considered to be added to the frequently asked questions page. And then finally, the contact page is for persons that wish to have more information specifically around safety and security can contact me, Mr. Weiser, for the next technologies for learning, and then general inquiries that can also use our relations email box. Okay? So that's the Safe and Innovative Schools website. As I said, it will be a living, breathing document, and we will continue to add to that. And as you are talking to folks, please direct them to the website. That's where they will find the most updated and consistent messaging around the referendum Also this week, we're developing a generic presentation for use by school board members, administrators, and others as they go out and work with or present to civic groups, organizations, churches, your church. Anyone that wants to have you to do a presentation, you'll have that in your hands. We're also developing a one-page flyer, if you will, or informational piece. Again, something that's collateral to handout or as you're talking with folks, if they would like more information, direct from the website or you'll have that piece. Jaclyn Swords, our manager of marketing communications, working with Andrea Alice, the communication specialist, on a number of videos that will be quick messages, quick pieces. Video is one of the most important communication vehicles in use today and even with our diverse communities. And then the other piece is the community survey that will be in the field in mid to late July. We are finalizing those questions and the presentation will come to you prior to August 23rd, which is, I believe, the final date that the board can change its mind on the So I encourage you so that we don't take any more time this evening, I can take questions, but encourage you to review the plan. Please email or call with any questions, concerns, additions we should consider. This is fairly high level. It does not go into specific dates of presentations and things like that. As they come, we will either add them to this or a different planning calendar. We want to try and keep this as clean as possible so that we stay on task and on what we've set out to do. With that, Chair Culver, I entertain any questions you might have.
Yes, thank you. Board members? Any response, questions? Yes, Dick, go ahead.
Just a quick one. Thanks for coming and thanks for putting all this together so quickly. If we email, if we call you, what types of questions can we ask you if we call you at your office? I just want to make sure that we're following the rules and we're asking--
You can ask me any question and I can respond to that question. Correct?
I think so. I'm not sure what question you might have in mind, but--
I could work up a list and run them past you.
No, thanks.
I, you know, I would encourage you to just ask the questions if we believe that it's, it would get into, you know, presenting a position, then I would respectfully tell you that I can't answer that question.
Okay. Thanks.
Other questions?
Looks like we appreciate the update, but we're not getting any further into it tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Again, I appreciate you keeping us updated. I know you'll continue to do so. Superintendent Fujitaki, any further business you have for us over at the table? Okay. Anyone else? Then we've completed the agenda for our additional information study session. Meeting's adjourned. Meeting's adjourned.